Auto order the June meeting of North Southford Township. First item on the agenda is for a motion to approve minutes of the May twenty-second meeting. I was not present, so I'm not going to make any changes from meeting now. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Any in state? I'm going to abstain to extension. Okay. We got one piece of housekeeping item to do. We need, we should have appointed a secretary in January, so. I am going to make a motion that we point Mike Bukey, secretary. Now you got a second.
Right.
Second from David Goodman. Any discussion? Another business card. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right, let's, that'll bring us down to plan review. First plan review is for three ninety-two Oak Drive, let's say. Someone representing, okay?
Lenny Kreitz, I've got Leno, Georgia, can be with me as well as our, my engineer, Tracy. Where. Tracy would be.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Beautiful. Okay. Good evening, yeah, we're, we're here this evening to. Okay, there's sheet one, thank you. For this lot that we're looking to subdivide at the corner of Penn, Penn Oak Court and Oak Drive. It is the original house on that parcel that was there when the subdivision was created. And I believe it was called Penn Oak Manor at the time. And this was lot twenty-two of, of that particular subdivision. Mike Buick does have that top, and so does Lenny of the original subdivision, if you guys want to show the. Lenny commission that and showing where that lot is, that would be good. And it is the corner lot, like I said, that had, there you go, that had the original house on it, Mike's pointing at it there. And that's the whole lot, which is in excess of, I believe it's an acre and a half. So what we're doing is, is subdividing lot twenty-two, which is allowable, subdivisible by one more lot with a restriction that was put on this subdivision when this was created. I think we said about thirty years ago, ninety-something is the date, I forget the date on the plan. Yeah, okay, so if you look in the notes in the bottom left-hand corner, note number nine points out that we have, that it's noted that this is no further subdivitable to create one more lot, but we have no right to further subdivide beyond that, there you go. So nineteen, and they even mentioned the density as well is still in compliance with the creation of this one new lot. Okay, so if we can go back to our, our sheet one. Okay, yeah, the back end of our property, the way the houses are, existing houses pointing at Oak Drive, is the part that we want to subdivide off from this property. Right now, the whole lot is considered lot twenty-two off the old plan. We're going to create twenty-two and twenty-three with our minor subdivision here and create that line that is shown eighty feet parallel to the, the end of the parcel that goes into the development. So we have an eighty-foot wide lot that is by right created by cutting it off of this parcel and constructing all the setbacks and all that. So our, our proposal of the house and driveway that's shown there is all by right as far as the compliance with the zoning. We received several reviews, one from the county planning commission. They appear to be in, in favor of it and had no comment. So we, we must fit in with their plan, or they would have come, so they don't. And they run through the criteria of that, of the subdivision all, and then just mentioned that at the very end of their letter that they support the applicant's proposal without comment on page two, the recommendation. We received one other review from CKS, from Michelle, who I believe is there tonight, right?
I am.
Good. We went through the, the entire review and have no issues with anything, and it will comply on the entirety of the letter without any need for any waivers. With the exception of one that, that Mike and I discussed, the fact that we are seeking a preliminary slash final approval tonight, if the board is so kind. But we, it may be a waiver that we need, but we're, I'm not sure, we're looking for an interpretation. If it's a minor subdivision, do we need to ask for a waiver of that step, or can we go right to final?
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're, we're going to keep that on, on the list of the waivers.
Okay, okay.
In abundance of cost.
Okay, no worries. That'd be, that, and, and that's pretty much it, I mean, unless you have questions in individual comments or a different, an item in one of the different drawings, we do have a five-sheet set here. First sheet being the record plan, second being the grading plan, third being landscaping, fourth being E and S, and the fifth is the existing conditions plan. There you go. Yes, the county letter is, has no comments. I don't know, Michelle, if you have any questions on any of your comments, but we don't have a problem with, with complying completely. But we'll probably need to discuss a couple of the items with you on how to address them, so.
All right, I, I guess I just have one question for you, and it's not
Yeah.
more a curiosity, I, I drive by this property every single day. And I, I do applaud you for the work that you're doing, I've seen how the dumpsters come and go, so I know you're doing something. I was just curious, I, I see that you have kind of thinned out the, the woods and cleaned up the woods in the front yard, actually quiet back. You do have a, there's an area sort of right on the corner that is a bit of a depression that seems to collect water, I'm just curious whether you're doing anything in the future.
At the, at the intersection of Penn Oak and Oak. I don't believe so, I actually well, I went through there, just cleaned out the undergrowth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was actually thinking there was a oh, they kind of ditched it that way.
It almost looks like.
There's a box there, and I thought that there might be, I didn't get their bird, but I didn't find anything. But it doesn't, because the water doesn't lay there very, rains, drains.
Little, little bit, but it, it might be a place you might think in the future, rain garden or something. Plants that really like water, it could do well there. It doesn't really have an effect on what it is. Anybody have any questions? Dave?
Pretty simple.
Any question?
Pretty simple.
Yeah, I, I think that's can we, can we get a motion? Well, I guess, does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay. And we get a, a motion. As a reminder, well, I guess I'll make, I make the motion that we give preliminary and final approval to the minor subdivision of three ninety subject to compliance with CKS dated June nineteen twenty twenty-four. Can we get a second? Okay, any discussion? All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That was. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Thank you very much, guys.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is one ninety-three Kinsey Road, this is a zoning hearing board application. We we actually just take these and do not make recommendations, but just discuss whether we have an issue with the, the least that's due. Mike, you want to give us just a real quick overview of this?
Yes. Okay, so it's been quite some time since last time that we had any zoning hearing board applications. So as a matter of procedure with the zoning hearing board application, we bring them in front of the planning commission for any comments that, that you might have to pass on to the board, whether or not to take a position with the zoning hearing board either for or against, or just let the zoning hearing board do as well. And that's the general reason to bring those only hearing applications here. So this zoning hearing board application is an application, let me pull up the plan here, so everyone sees it. So so the, the applicant, Jason Arns is here to present. I can just go quickly through the general aspect of the application, one ninety-three Kinsey Road. And this is the proposed plan and the existing house. Let me share this on Zoom, so everybody use this later, can see it on Zoom. Okay, so now we're on Zoom. So this is the existing house, and this is his existing driveway, his existing driveway includes where he wants to place the garage, okay? So right now, it's a side-loaded garage and, and he wants, he, he parks here, this is his turnaround area, and this is where he wants to place his garage, and it complies with zoning with all aspects except for side yard setback. Side yard setback is required to be forty feet, which is this line right here. And he wants to place the existing garage on the existing pavement, which is about twenty-five feet from the side of the property. Okay, so that's the very essence of this. And Jason, I can hand it over to you, then you can add anything, I have your PowerPoint presentation if you wanted to talk about that.
Sure. If you want to go to PowerPoint, it's fine.
Yeah, so what Mike already had talked about, you can see there's, at the, I would say the bottom of the driveway or top of the driveway, whatever. There's actually an existing kind of parking area. And that would be the location of where I'd like to put up a pole barn garage. Due to the fact that the house is kind of centered on the lot and the width of the lot is the minimum of the R one A zoning, that kind of prohibits me from really putting anything on either side of the property, I'd have to put it in the back of the property, and then that would encroach on the existing sand. So that's why I'm the one after the variance. Next slide. So the garage would be about twenty-seven foot wide by thirty-three foot deep. The only section of the code that I am not going off of right now would just be that thirty foot seven. So I'm asking for a variance so that I can, so that I can have a twenty-five foot side yard instead of the rear. Go ahead, next slide. That's the picture of the proposed garage. Yes, I almost said you so much. Originally, the original lot, the, the one that I think this shows pretty much exactly where what I'm dealing with, the, the solid lines that the pool is running through and the garage, the proposed garage is running through, those are all setbacks, so those are the forty-foot step bringing setbacks on either, either side of the yard. And as you can see, then, and, and then in, in the rear yard as well. And if you scroll up, Mike, you can see actually the cleanup for the, those T O's are cleaning up the setbacks. So it would be, it's not conducive for me to put the garage and, and make that forty.
How tall will building be?
It's total down a little more, it's right there on the seventeen foot seven. It's not as tall as the house.
Okay, and we the next, that's going to be.
That's correct.
That's well.
Yeah, it informs that every, all the accessory rules except for. Anybody have any comments?
The tree line is still there, correct?
Correct, the tree line is just there.
There was notice giving, neighbor's not objecting.
Yeah, we discussed with the neighbor, they're okay with it, that tree line provides plenty of coverage to the neighbor.
So it's going to be a pole barn?
Yes.
Have a concrete floor?
Yes.
And eating, lighting, everything inside.
Lighting. I'll, I'll let her.
Hardship, why would we need to change that setback line? I understand you don't want to get too close, of course, to a sand mound, but it looked like there was plenty of room to have structure setback further from the property line. And if there's a good enough reason, change the setback, I don't think you should change this because we prefer it holding there. I think there needs to be a reason, some kind of a hardship or some situation that's preventing the car from being shifted over, the garage from being shifted over. Obviously, you need to have some distance between your existing cleanouts for the septic system. Couldn't go back too far, you decided to push the sand round, but that doesn't mean you couldn't go closer, you couldn't go further away. So that even if you needed to on the existing setback, mine wouldn't have to be as much at all. And, you know, it's not a huge project and it probably would look fine, but those trees have died. So unless there's a pressing reason to make that kind of a change, I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, fortunately, that is not our task. That is, that is the purview of the zoning board.
I thought we were sharing.
And, and, no, we are. One other thing I will point out to you though, is that Julie is right, that there does need to be a good reason. My own opinion is, I think you do have a reason for some relief, but one of the other regulations in terms of getting a variance is that you, you are requesting just the minimum amount of relief necessary to, to obtain, to, to complete the project or wherever the votes are placed. So whether twenty-five feet is the minimum amount or not, that might be the only thing I would question. But again, that's, that's not really for this board to permit, and you'll have to make your case to the zoning hearing board. And see where that goes. Are there any other comments that made? Any position to take, I think, on, on this? Just let the C H B do his job. Good luck. Just go every, through everything very fluid. Brady Harleyville Pike, we'll leave, it's a step plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yo. Kristen Pianzio with Camberk, Ruben Mull and Max Von Lupin, nice to see you all. Nice to not be going to your zoning hearing board. The plan that we are going to talk to you about tonight, this is the third time we're here with a sketch. Our job is to comply with the zoning ordinance, which this plan does. We come to the planning commission with a sketch in order to solicit comments, direction, you know, planning ideas, what are the concerns of the neighbors? What are the concerns of the planning commission, your staff and consultants? And see what, if anything, we can incorporate into our plan before we go to full engineering. Saying yes to as much as possible makes my job a lot easier, same for my client, the process goes smoother, the more we can do. So we went back to the drawing board since here in May to look at what we can say yes to and what we can say no to, and we thought we would come back on an informal basis and discuss that with you. Back in the summer, this time last year, we first approached this project and this property, had a staff meeting with your consultants. And the first thing we were told was, where's this road going to align? And we knew that that would drive the bus for this whole developments, because where this road aligns dictates everything to do with this development. So the first thing we did was have a meeting with Penn Dot and find out where does this road need to go. Penn Dot has emphatically told us that it must align with Meeting House across the street. So that's where we started, so that's one of the things that I can't change. Since then, we came back in December twenty twenty-three, we showed you a thirty-six unit plan. That plan, and I think Mike's going to pull it up, thank you, Mike. Very different than what we're going to talk about tonight and what you saw back in May. We had the buildings with the backyards up against the property line. We utilized density bonuses to achieve the thirty-six lots. And we got lots of comments, lots of pushback from the neighbors. We understand that our neighbors are looking at something very different today. And there's only so much I can do to mitigate that. I'm not going to be able to make the units disappear, but we can try to do what we can to mitigate and soften the experience that's going to change for them. And, and, and I'm aware of that. So when we came in December, everyone hated this, it was too much, it was too close, we didn't want to look at the backyards. So we took some time and came up with the plan that you saw in May. So the biggest change was, we pulled the units off of the edge of the property line, so the backs of the units were no longer facing our adjacent residential neighbors. Instead of a forty-foot setback to the backs of those units, now we have over a hundred feet to the first side of a unit. So they have a side here, a front and front here and a side here. So with this, there were a lot of comments from the planning commission, so we went back and met again to see what we could do about some of the comments that you made according to this design. Now, this is a zoning compliant plan, it meets the minimum lot size, it meets the minimum number of units, it meets the setbacks, it meets the open space. So this plan complies with your code. But again, trying to be thoughtful, anticipating some of the issues that we would face as we go into full engineering. We went back to the drawing board and tweaked this plan to, and we want to show you tonight what we were able to accomplish based on the comments that we received. What we couldn't do, let's start with that, because that list is shorter, thankfully. We didn't lose lots. We did not move this unit to this building because it pinches against this cul-de-sac. We were able to move this cul-de-sac, it was thirty-one feet, it's now forty. So we were able to pull that away from that property line. We were able to push the trail, the trail was, there's a fifteen-foot buffer along this property line here. And the trail was right along that fifteen-foot buffer, the request was to move it away, now it's thirty-two feet from that property line. The county made a comment that the trail was only five feet wide, make it eight feet, we did that too. We extended the trail from the cul-de-sac all the way to the township park. And we know that connectivity is very important, as you know, we have sidewalks on both sides of our internal streets. Now you can walk all the way through, come across this trail and get to the township park. At one of our first conversations we had back in the summer was a question of making this connection here from Cheswick. We had to look into whether or not the right-of-way existed, and we found out that it does, we are able to make that off-site connection. There is a fence, it's not in great shape, but there, it's not owned by us, so we have to deal with the fence because that's in the way, but we're willing to work with the neighbor and you guys, so that people can come out of Cheswick Drive, come through, walk through our neighborhood and get all the way to the park. We were able to soften these angles, there was a comment about these were sort of sharp along the edges here. So we were able to soften those turns, and then we, we're, we checked them to make sure that those turning radiuses work, we did that. And lastly, we added berms, berms, sequences of berms along the entire property lines adjacent to the neighbors. Now, what we plan on doing, and if you could pull up the color rendering now, Mike. So we colored up the plan with these revisions, it looks like this. This is the required landscaping along the edges. Now, obviously, when we do full engineering, we'll be back here in front of the planning commission, your consultants will write review letters, you'll have comments about the full design of this plan, the stormwater basins and things like that. But we wanted to show you that we were able to achieve these berms along the perimeter that we can fill with landscaping. There are breaks between the berms, and the reason why is this property is the detention basin of all the neighbor properties. Everybody drains to us because we have this drainage canal. So in order to put, we have to put breaks in the berms so that the water continues to drain towards us, so that we can capture it, infiltrate, hold it back and release it into the system at the pace required by your ordinance and by the county conservation district. So it's kind of like a break and a curb, so that the water flows. So those things we were able to do. There was comments about the basins being naturalized, we plan on adding B and Ps and plantings and things like that. We are sort of in a pinch spot here with this basin, because we have a property line here, and then we have the soils we have to stay out of right here. But we're confident that we can make, you know, get that basin with the proper plantings, you know, adding the slips and whatever to get that infiltration to happen. The last thing I did want to talk about and see if you guys had any further ideas. The cartway widths are thirty, your code requires thirty, remember, these are private streets. We'd like to keep this one at thirty because we have this parallel parking along the side. But this one here, if we could bring it to twenty-six, it would reduce the amount of impervious coverage and therefore reduce the demand on that stormwater management, we think that's a good planning idea, wanted to have your thoughts on that. But that summarizes what we were able to do between last month and this month before we go to design.
Is there parking on that cul-de-sac?
There is not parking planned on the cul-de-sac.
Because I live on a twenty-six foot wide, three, in a townhouse development, that's the thing I'm opposed to that.
You're a what?
I'm opposed to that.
Okay. Tell me why.
Because when somebody parks on that cul-de-sac, even though you're saying it's not going to be any, there will it's not an issue of being able to drive up and down the street, that's perfectly fine. You can't back out of those driveways though, because you're going to hit the side of somebody's car. I always have somebody parked across from my driveway, bugs me.
Okay.
So I, after forty-four years of planning, I have to reform, and I recommend twenty-six foot ones.
All right.
That would be my one. My second comment. And I do apologize, I have not been in the next two meetings, so I'm not completely up on where this has developed. I question why you would want to put berms on the front, parallel to one fifteen. There, there's a lot of really beautiful trees there.
We don't have berms up in the front.
I thought that that just showed. Berms.
We do?
That's, that's the township requirement.
This is a nod. This is a nod. He's our civil engineer. I'll let him answer that.
Yeah.
We do show them. You're right.
I, I, I really got to say I.
Is that the stopping? Is that now?
It's um.
We documented asking.
Okay.
And I think, I think to get a feel of that, you really need to show the existing trees on the uh with the units and and see where the proximity of trees are, but I can't see the point of doing berms and disturbing. Doesn't make sense. The question I do have is, it looks like, well, are are these units three stories or two stories?
Two stories.
Are they two different sizes?
They're all twenty-six feet, right? Yep, all twenty-six.
These, the both facing one thirteen are much skinnier than you got. Yeah, they don't look the same.
Yeah, if you look on the plan, there's measurements on the buildings. Maybe maybe because there's a string of them, they look thinner.
Yeah. And they're the same depth?
Same depth, Lauren.
Yes, yeah, they're just uh.
Yeah, same measure.
I did see the measures, but boy, unit thirteen looks wider than unit seven.
We should charge a premium for that one then.
So there there aren't trees all the way across.
There's not, and and planting should be put there. I just questioned Birmingham because that caused a lot of. I can't really.
We'll take a closer look at the trees and where there's pockets where we can fill in and where disturbance would have to happen.
I mean, especially because you've got back to the units facing one thirteen now, it should be a real high priority to save as many of the existing trees as possible.
I agree.
Um, and and just supplement the landscaping for me. That's pretty much all of my. Anyone else doing?
At the last meeting, we discussed um because this is a very dense development, this portion of the property. And that we'd like to see. Uh, I think at one point we were talking about one less unit in the lower uh lower left grouping. And I think also along the top of the straight line of uh the two uh buildings across the top of the page. It's very dense. Um, I realize we're looking at sort of the general plan here doesn't have all the engineering grading. Um. And I think it's gonna be very tight. I think that you're gonna end up with very interesting grading to this grade. Because there's not many near my space to work with. Um. And I'd like to see those. I'd like to see actually three units. One from each of the points at the top of the page and one from the lower left corner grouping.
I, I'd like to point out the required open space is fifteen percent and this provides twenty-seven and a half percent. So I don't know what, very dense apparently is subjective. So this is showing more green space and less units than we could provide on this plan. So um, we think that it fits perfectly. It complies with the zoning code more than complies for over a lot in the open space.
It's been public comment.
We'll get to that.
Uh, just a quick question on the bike trail. Does that match up to the one that's in the uh development um? The new development.
Fox Lane home.
Yeah.
Do you mean does, is it the same width or does it extend all the way to the?
Well, first, does it go here or there and does it extend to it?
It doesn't look like it's uh extends to the existing trail, but I'm sure during review process, we're gonna ask you to extend it to the existing trail. Um, I believe it's the same width as that.
Okay.
Trail.
The requirement's eight, right, right. And so it's eight, so similar.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think what Joe is referring is the point where.
Right off the page, right? So that, yeah, it's not far.
Not that, okay. Very.
If you're gonna match up to it, so.
Yeah, I think like Michelle said, it'll come up in a review and you're gonna ask us and probably say yes, sir.
Yeah, so we'll be extending it another fifty feet. I'm excited. Instead of making a berm. And then, you know, put in certain places where you're gonna have it open. Couldn't you put piping drainage in there instead of cutting the berm out, have drainage run through? Just put a pipe through there?
I think that would require work off site. Right, the main person.
I think what's gonna happen is it is possibly if I back it up and be normal, but it's.
I understand that.
So it's better to kind of have berms, like, and if you put strategically those cuts in the strategic location where you're not seeing through so between property lines so that he, that's not.
Yeah, because the point of the berm is.
I'd be able to put shocks there so that it's kind of visually, it's gonna be a bit putting barrier in, but we don't want to kind of have a berm pull through and then have the water back.
Yeah, if we start messing with the drainage on the neighbor's property, then we get in trouble. So if we let it flow the way it is now, then we prevent that, but we can do the landscaping in between the breaks.
Our service.
Yeah. Is it uh the emergency things fit, I think it's fifteen feet wide? Yeah, that's fine. And the trails.
Is, is is the emergency access proposed to be paid?
Yes, yeah, okay.
I guess we could send it up twenty-six foot with only in cul-de-sac area or by the entire drive?
Well, it's, it's, it's all of road B, I believe, is, is what's gonna be twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause.
That back in the driveway, that would be that whole stretch.
It's the entire, yeah, it's the entire. Somebody is parking on the opposite side of the street from units uh that seven through twelve. You know, eventually somebody will back in. Now, if you had bump outs there for parking, twenty-six feet is fine. It's not an issue of cartway usability, yeah, certainly two cars. Yeah, it, it really doesn't matter. Have you got any other questions?
Good.
Okay. Okay, members of the public, um, any comments or questions? Yes, ma'am. Uh, can you, can you give us your name and address, please, for the reference?
Again, get back to what we're talking about, the part of eliminating the end units. The cul-de-sac that goes straight into when you're coming in the entrance to that development, if you're coming in at night. If you bring that back up where all winter drive is. One, two, three, four of those houses are gonna get high beams headlights. And the one name who didn't come tonight, I don't see him, he's like that last unit that somebody talked about taking off at the end of that cul-de-sac with the curved driveway. As soon as they turn in, his family room is gonna get the headlight right in. Not to mention the first four houses are gonna have high beams and headlights coming in, and I don't know what the solution to that is. But his concern is as soon as they turn in, all those houses are gonna get their high beams and most of those when they have family rooms in the back where they're sitting in the evening. So at least that one that they were talking about eliminating the first time. And then one in the other corner of the top cul-de-sac with again that curves that turn in driveway at the end. It's like packed in. I know you want to get as many in there as you want. But get rid of those two with those curved driveways at the end and I mean, that whole area that's facing most Cheswick. It'll, it's just less, it's just I just think more aesthetically better.
What the, what's the, in the height of the berm in relation to the rover cars come in? Will the, will that block all the lights of the cars?
You three P, so yeah, the lights, and again, if you can plant shelves and and trees on top of it, yes.
Um, Betty, that would be three.
I'm sorry, Betty, what's your last name?
Betty.
D U D D Y? Correct, thank you.
Three, three Cheswick. Um, I have a few things before we even get into what I want to negotiate with on this, because we can't handle any of this, because this is outrageous, but um, there is a wetland in that section, and I know you guys know that. It's even designated wetland. The little delineation thing. Um, I'm not sure where all of that is going to. I don't know if it's going to the back of the house and going to new development by Maple, going into the baseball fields that they're going to be building or where that runoff is gonna be going to. Um, and then there's another little section of I can't see it right now, where it's, you know, where that tiny little spot is coming out of the house. Yeah, I have no idea with that.
Maybe, maybe if you could just explain it.
Yeah, the water we're seeing, we have working scientists who went out as well as the water courses. And that's a portion of the property in the water. We are planning to relocate it to a, to a pipe section which is already in pipes. There is a portion of being supplied. We are going to relocate that. We are working in D E P. You know, they're conforming the education. So uh, to answer your question, yes, that there is a small portion which is considered a workhorse, but it's being relocated and we have to go through permitting process.
We were gonna relocate a stream, maybe intermittent stream. We were gonna relocate from from three, I remember the last set of plans we had. And we were excited, you know, that would interrupt the wetlands. It would was a lot of problems with the, I think he did that at the beginning, but um, I know workhorse is one of the type of things that we're dealing with the water and the streams and the rivers and that, but I haven't looked up too much on that. I don't know if that's gonna be causing the same type of problem. I do know you were going to send all the water from the front of the property to the back of the property, which is not gonna be real induced. You said it's gonna go into your water standing, storage units, things like that. But I, I have video and I have pictures of this whole land. And if you want to see a river, you could see twenty-five rivers going on in this, this property. We wouldn't have enough pipes to root all of this water when it rains hard to get into your worst storage, storage units and so on. Uh, that little wetland area of delineation, that's not gonna be enough, so anyway. And basically, when I called to the conservation department and when I called the DPA and the water work department, waterways. They indicated if there's Bowman'sville soil, if there's red, redness soil, if there's regaled soil, which there is on this property. It could be considered a floodplain. And I do know you can build on a floodplain, but it probably not was good conscious or conscious.
We're, we're staying out of the floodplain. We're staying out of the Bowman'sville soils. We are not piping as the original plan showed back in December. All that's been abandoned.
Right, just to clarify one thing. Bowman'sville soil is considered flood. However, the mapping is far from perfect. So uh, landowners or developers do have the right to go and have soil testing done, see if it in fact is Bowman'sville. That is now a moot point because they have moved everything out of the Bowman'sville soil.
There is other soil.
We're not going in soils that we're not allowed to go in. We're not going into any floodplain that's prohibited. We're doing nothing that violates the zoning ordinance and all of that's contained.
When you're doing that delineation, you should, we are as well.
That, that goes to a stream that uh then goes through the Fox Lane Homes Development.
And that's not gonna be overwhelming to them.
It goes there today?
It goes there today. Right there.
So I'll be chatting. Stream is probably in a different part of that property. On the, in here, it's like, now you're streaming one stream, don't get bored.
So, so if I may, the township ordinance requires us to manage all additional impervious coverage through stormwater management. Your code will require us to hold back and infiltrate water such that we are gonna control the water better when this construction is done than exists today. It will have controls that don't exist today as a result of your ordinance. So I know people don't believe like, oh, if you build, the stormwater is gonna get better. Nobody believes it. However, your codes are strict. Uh, the DEP permitting process is also strict. The county conservation will be reviewing all of that. Your township engineer will be reviewing that to make sure that we comply with all those requirements so that we do no harm. And actually will improve the stormwater management than exists today on this property.
And I have a question about the berms also. Excuse me, Betty, moving my five, you know, going on some water, sure. Uh, my name is Lori Yamachina. Four seventy, White Crystal. And I share Betty's concerns because, because we've seen issues. What I would like, would you please provide a general overview of stormwater management? For example, you know, across one thirteen. All, so stormwater from across one thirteen on Meeting House Road does run across down into your property here. Um, secondly, there's been some discussion about traffic. And I believe that was a December meeting. There was, I know, a long-term plan, but a left turn lane. Um, my understanding of that would be on the far side of one thirteen. You've got the right-of-way, and to me, it sounds like you would add another with another lane of roadway. Uh, to me, there would be more impervious material from expanding widening the roadway which would create even more stormwater running across one thirteen onto the proposed development. Um, so I think you talk about water across one thirteen coming to your property. It currently runs through that first block of the mountain coast. Could you expand that? It's maybe, yeah, give me one more second.
Red ring if you do.
So I mean, doesn't it go through naturally where that first block out costs are located?
Alright, so, so give him the fact. He's gonna walk you through it.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're correct. There is a curve here, uh, which is crossing the partisan pipe. And right just just the stripe of the section here. And that curve, those curves are being extended down and pipe down towards the existing waterway which connects to the floodplain soils which we are not disturbing and we hitting on. They propose strong, so that in all the stormwater which is going, which is coming from the existing neighborhood is continued to come, is going to continue to come to our property. We're going to convey and make sure it conveys to the the stream downstream, which is where we need to convey to. The new stormwater, which is very private, this road B has certain number of units which will be collected through, so we're using it on a strong base and pipe through to the stormwater basin located at the north, north corner of the property. And yeah, uh, on this location, uh, we have a stormwater basin for road B and for road A, there's a stormwater basin which is going to be used. And all this drainage will control, drainage will control the strong additional stormwater for your township ordinance as well as the DEP requirements. We have to meet those requirements before we can show on the ground. So that is going to be uh required of us. It, as, as you know, there is no stormwater management right now on the property, whatever impervious surface of the word uh. Be water back. Here we'll be holding the water back, infiltrating into the ground and releasing vertical which comes out of the, the basins into the creek. So it's certainly going to be an improvement in soul.
Okay, my question is, would you agree with my previous comment? If you are widening one thirteen to provide better traffic control, then you will be adding more impervious surface we would drain into your property. And would that be accounted for? And would that be accounted for with your stormwater management?
We, if, if at all, then they're required us to add that left turn lane. Yeah, you're not sure, we have, based on the discussion we have had, not needed to require. But if it's required and we are adding any impervious, just like, like a building, you're adding, adding, adding impervious for this project. We will have to manage that in our stormwater base, so it's not like, okay, it's just for the roads so we can, that doesn't matter. It's for this project, so we have to manage, maintain.
Tell me a little more about. He on the map, it looked like a little river right, running right up to that house, that first upper left block. Okay, you say you're relocating this four year, this four year. The, the light colored area, is that a driveway, and what is the blue thing that's running through two driveways?
So that's, that's, there is a watercourse stream, that, not a watercourse stay, yeah, so that is, that is what. We are, that portion of this small watercourse stream which is above ground is being relocated pipe through this color right now. And, and we are working with P A D B board to get permits for this, we have already have downsizing D E P on this. And they have seen this plan, certainly, and the government has been made to us saying. Certainly better plan than what we had shown before, because that was realigning the entire watercourses throughout the site and, uh, relocating the watercourses completely. Here we are relocating only a portion of it, which meets the, the threshold, so we will be allowed to do so with it.
If you get a permit.
But we, yes.
Can you confirm my understanding there are no basements?
There will be.
Or there are basements?
We plan basements.
Okay, in December, was, was the developer involved?
So let me say this, let me.
And I was told.
So let me say, let me say this. We're gonna try to get basements for sure. I don't know that we're going to achieve basements, this is just a sketch, it's a two D design. So all the engineering that he has to do, which is a thick sheet of plans with all. The grading and all that, how the soil moves and, and the bouncing of the site and things like that, none of that's been done yet, so. This is just a schematic to deal with planning issues. How wide the roads are, how the trail connects, the open space, you know, the basic design, the layout. But then he has to do the full design, and that will determine whether or not there's basements, but. I'm gonna say that we're gonna try to get basements, yes.
Okay, my concern that I thought of in December is I live in Cheswick, next door here. Moved in thirty-eight years ago. Most of the people I know that lived in Cheswick have had problems with water in your basement. I know different stormwater rates, different, a different time. My concern is, my, my overall safety and environmental issues. And protecting future residents, as well as, you know, anybody driving through the area.
Sure.
The concern is. If you dig, you're gonna find sand in the backyards, that's the reason there's so much water pooling in the area. Um, we do know, and, and Betty has the full history, we do know one developer walked away. And they did get their soil testing equipment stuck in the field for I don't know how long, they got stuck in the mud. My personal background, I'm a civil engineer. Okay, I specialize in environmental work, and I worked with a company that was. Going around curating other land, so I took a little background. And I, I'm concerned if there are, if you do that.
So as civil engineer, you'll understand all the hoops that we have to go through yet. And we have to prove to that lady sitting at the table, as well as the county conservation. And the D E P through our separate permit, that we meet all the regulations so that we do. Right now, this property receives stormwater from your neighbor. Okay, and we can do nothing about it but manage it, which we're doing. And then we have to manage what we're doing on the property, we have to do the geotech to see what's underground. And we have to design a stormwater management system, that's not been done yet, but I've taken notes to know that you guys flood. Basements in the surrounding property, that's useful information, so thank you for that. But we're not, we're just not there yet, but thank you for that input, and then he has to work on that.
I agree. I, I don't, I wanna take a, yeah, but I, I. Uh, I think I can relay the statement that you need all of the. I mean, there's two full ten.
Zoning, zoning. Zoning is what we can do on your, the zoning book, right, which means. We meet the density, we meet the setbacks, the open space requirements, things that are required in the zoning code. But when he does the full design, that's a whole nother book, that's the subdivision of land development ordinance, that's where you see the work labor. You know, and things like that, stormwater management has to be done, that's outside of zoning. And then things that have to do with the actual infrastructure, how the stormwater pipes are gonna work, landscaping, lighting. Pipe, you know, things like that, so that's a separate book, separate ordinance, and that's his job.
Okay, but I'm just one more question, I know Betty asked what he thinks. With zoning, um, Julie asked a question that, you know, our perception of it seems very dense. And you, you, um, made a statement that it meets the rates. Are you using the available development space? I mean, if the wetlands and the protected areas in here, is that using your calculations?
So the zoning code, see on the upper right-hand pointer, there's a chart, there's a calculation we have to do. To get to the base site area, and then have a density based on that, and an open space requirement, so all that's taken into account. So see all this green to the right, this, this is significantly open. And even though they're clustered in one area, it makes for a better design to do that, and that way we can take advantage of this wide open green area that people can walk through and enjoy, so. We do have twenty-seven percent open space, we're required fifteen. So it's not dense from a zoning perspective, we meet the R four zoning requirements as far as how much we put in this property. We more than exceeded, almost double the requirement of open space.
What percentage on? At the area, do you have a major of that? Like, if we took that out of the equation, what would?
The ordinance allows us to count that. It's, the ordinance allows us to count the, the undoable floodplain soils that follow it. So that, if. But that, that, no, but the, the requirement, it makes, your requirement, the requirement says. In growth track area, between the bases of your. And that's the ordinance.
Following the code is the bottom line.
Uh, Mackenzie Holiday, four seven.
Hang on, Mackenzie. Kenzie Holiday?
Yep, H O L A B A Y.
So, I'm sorry, what was your address again?
Four seven two Westford Circle. So, did you just say that you're needing? The requirement for the entire plot of landing out here, so even the place that you can't build on, that counts towards the density? Is that correct?
Yes.
So like, if that stage wasn't there, because it's not buildable. You're, we're dense than in the space that you are in.
The code is calculated on the gross acreage.
Okay.
So the entire tract is taken into consideration, and you're only allowed to build on so much of the entire tract.
Right, so even though that's not so.
Right, because that's the green area that everyone gets to enjoy without buildings on.
It's a scandal.
You cannot use the trail and then walk through it if you'd like, but that's what the code requires, we're not here for any relief, we're not here for a zoning change, we're not here for zoning variance. We're not here for any relief from the zoning code, this plan complies.
No, I understand that, but you're not able to build there. So you comply with the land that's not buildable.
Right, but just like people. Just like people who have woods, if you can't take your woodlands down. But the woods count because you're not disturbing the earth, and you're allowing natural habitats to thrive. That's what the code does, don't build where the natural habitats are, build where they aren't. So yes, you do get the ability to build on your property because you own it, and there's certain land rights that people have, so this property applies. And we're not asking to do more than what we're allowed to do.
No, I, I, I'm not fighting that, but when you say it's almost double. You know.
The green area, sure.
Yeah, it kind of works in your bigger, because it's not buildable, so like that number looks great on your.
Just like a wooded lot.
Correct.
But the same requirements, you can't take trees down, apply to wooded property, so. Like, it's the same.
I'm just looking.
Yeah. We're not fighting it, right, it's, it's not wooded, it's not open. It's not flood plain, yeah.
Let's go to the side.
Deborah Helts, four seven five Westford Circle.
What was your last name, Deborah?
Helts, H E L D T.
Thank you.
Um, I was at the zoning, um, the plan last month as well, and at that time, there was a recommendation from one of the. Members o- on the board to take away four units, like three, Julia was, I think she was surprised by that.
Okay, wait, wait, stop right there. There may have been a, a, um.
Request.
Reflexed. Right, there was not a recommendation, we have not under recommendation at all. We are not making a recommendation tonight.
So, and it was the. And the bottom. Because of the term of the. Of the driveway, and because they just started to. Too many units together. Um, and so I'm surprised that.
Yeah.
But it's still there this month. My, my. I was hopeful that would not be there, because on the property that currently is there. Start the trail, because there is a natural over thirty or forty year. That the cows used when the barn was there, the horses used as of two years ago, before the horses left the property. And it is high ground. That is high ground up there. Where you have the trail now. It might be fine where it starts, but I live over here down at this area of Bullfrog Creek. And it currently, I know storm management is going to maybe take care of all this. But that becomes marshland. And that will be very wet. And as you see, that trail gets closer and closer to Bullfrog Creek. And if all of this land, water that's coming across one thirteen is going to go into this bypass, and then there's a, uh. A, an opening green area where it doesn't even connect. I, I, I think you're gonna have a little boggy spot there, now.
But like, like you said, the storm, the stormwater management should help that and alleviate that.
Um, okay, I'll, we'll just let that be for now.
Okay.
But I still think that your path is going to get bogged down. Because I sat and watched when surveyors and engineers came out. And I watched the equipment get stuck there, and I watched them try multiple times to get graders out. They did, but they, they took a while. Um, so I am asking about moving the trail because. It's, the trail right now is going into the backyards. Of about fourteen people, fourteen families, fourteen units, fourteen houses. On the upper part. And it interacts with the very. In relationship. Fourteen of. Uh, when you're, you might already showed that, because I walked back there on. Fox Lane to see where it could connect. I don't know, it's not really important. I mean, it's important to me, but it may not be. There's a fence there, is the fence just going to be left alone?
There's a fence waiting.
There's a fence along the whole property, because that was, that was a cow pasture, and then it was a horse pasture. So you have the berms. On the side of the property that is currently there.
Yeah, the fence will have, the fence will go.
So then every individual who has property there is going to have to put up their own fence. To keep their property private like it currently is. Which means you're asking me and my neighbors all along there. To put money out to build a fence.
No, we're not asking you to do anything.
Well, you are, if you're taking away the privacy of my backyard, where I now have to put a fence there to keep my backyard private. So that my autistic grandson will not be running out into the fields.
Your fence is shown on the property line, it's not shown to be removed at this time. So in order to put the berm in and the landscaping, it's going to need to come out. We, you, I suggest that you look into that, because it's on the property line as shown.
It can be there, Michelle, I just want to make sure that work is. Very slowly.
If they have a swimming pool along, they have to have a fence.
It's not their fence, but.
If they have a swimming pool on their property, they have that fence.
It's the farm's fence, so you're using it to meet your fence requirement in the rear, we're gonna look at it, we'll look at it, we can keep the fence, we'll keep the fence. But it is the farm's fence, but we'll look at it.
And you had. Four seven eight, four seven eight.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name in a while. Tom Baz? Sorry, you're right, just again.
Four seven eight, Arlingtonville, right?
Thank you.
On that property, um, next to the cannon. So I didn't follow up on that, because that was actually one of my questions, too, there is a fence along the back of the property line inside.
Same, the same fence they're talking about continues around by your property?
Leave, so I actually can't see them because of all the trees that are there.
Okay.
So I don't actually know what kind of fence they have, but they're post rail, it's slip rail on the side. The back is almost like a, kind of, I mean, it's still a bit, it's dark and shaded.
There is a fence there.
There is.
There's a fence there along the hall, even.
Yeah, I didn't know what I was saying.
Showed him.
I know, but there is a fence there. Just like other one of you, take a look at it, if we can, if you can. It's, it's in bad shape. So I just wanted to, that, and I'm also like the trees in the back. There's a lot of old trees and blocks of power lines, provide shade for my yard. What happens to those trees? They're gonna stay and give them added. Uh, and then as far as, well. It's all about leaving underground streams and everything like that. What's to say two years down the road, you guys are gone? All of a sudden, either I got brown water or no water.
And we are relocating only a small portion, which is on the upstream side, you're further downstream, you're not touching that stream which was. Before the previous man, you're going to relocate, we're not relocating it.
So the water's still gonna flow? Just that part in front of the, those driveways that he was talking about, water course C, that's going to be piped, but it's going to be piped to the same direction and flow with the rest of it across the property?
So it's not gonna change in the summer or fall, if it is?
Correct.
Yeah, we're gonna even make it even better, because we have some water management in those locations, we'll have, we'll have been infiltrating more into the ground. Compared to what it is.
That a sheet flow running across the property, it'll actually get absorbed with the plants that we plant in the stormwater basins.
But we don't know if it's gonna be good water. Or change by.
Good water, I don't know if it's gonna be good water or bad. It's gonna be the same, same water, I mean, we're not changing the water.
It's actually in the runoff of the road or anything like that, which may be falling away, now it's gonna be sitting in that, I guess that's.
Oh, you're talking about infiltration, like sediment from the road getting.
Gash.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So all that's covered in the same regulations that we. Township regulations and the county and state regulations, that's the infiltration part that we have to do. That's why people do naturalized planting, those plants grab all that stuff. Before the water goes into the ground, so that's all part of our permitting process.
And then that other one, the square shit on how water stain. You know, kind of thing or anything like that, or you know, every little place.
Yeah, yeah.
So the requirement is you, you cannot see one in seventy hours, N B M E.
Thank you.
Right here, so Alan Duddy, where you can reach us with traffic. Except two things, one bit of information, she said, it's a useful. The new home that were built next to the post office have basins, the basins are like. Neighbors.
Next to the post office?
For you having a work issue over there, for having to be in the basement.
Thank you.
Um, just to go back to the left turn lane. We've been in contact with Penn Dot, and I know everything's preliminary this week. They have recommended off the left turn lane. The intersection, Jeswick, at the new road as well. What's that gonna be the impact progress on? One thirteen. They're playing away from those properties. Wide in the roof.
Haven't designed, we haven't gotten that far. We haven't submitted design yet to Penn Dot. We have to work within right of way. The right of way goes beyond grass and many times people think what's part of their front yard, they don't really own, sometimes that's part of the right of way for Penn Dot. But to be honest with you, I don't have an answer for you yet until we get into the design.
But potentially some of that has to go. One thirteen.
I mean, I guess. It would be unfair to me, for me to say no, it's not.
And and the other thing I would add is our traffic engineer is not here this evening. But they will be evaluating all of those things. When this progresses through a fully engineered application.
Betty, Betty, it's in Jeswick. The buildings that you have in the back of the property. Shame you couldn't sit them anywhere in the front. Um, because really, we're just. Causing more havoc, I think, for the residents that are gonna be living there. Unactually set of buildings, one building will be, uh. Units are gonna be not very far from the actual wetland renovation mark there. Um, I was told last meeting that they won't even have a patio because it can't extend to where the wetland is going to start. And I'm just really concerned because. There's no guarantee, no matter how you pipe it, redirect, regroup to anything, that they're not gonna be impacted by it. Um, the soil is is. Is gonna be still getting herniated with with water, it's gonna have, uh, it says that any house built near wetland, wetlands, sort of humidity. And soil, it could flood, it's got a lot of different things that could happen to it and. You know, if you can move it someplace else, it would make it that much better and we wouldn't have to be worried about. You know, looking at more than we have to look at. Um, that's probably one comment. Um, the other part commented one of the berms, um. I've read about it, it just has, has soil erosions, it promotes runoff. It discourages infiltration and precipitation, it causes puddling. If the water level on the wetland side of the berm is higher than the lot side. You won't be able to get flow out of. Out of that area, lots. It's a lot of trouble, and I know you're doing it so that we can have some privacy. And we won't have to look at everything that you're doing, um. But I'm worried about that, too, because if you guys or. The builders are no longer in business anymore in years to come, because they had trouble with that before. And they're gone, um, who will we go to, or who does that home association? They only ask so long, so who does that go to?
Um, if you want to pause, I can address that.
Okay.
And so when. Nad does the design. He has to then do, have the grading elevations and all of that submitted to the township and the county conservation district. In order for us to get an input, what's called an N P C, yes, right, right? So they're gonna review that to see if the grades work on paper. And then when it's actually built. C K S, Shell's office is on site, inspected. All day long, as this is getting constructed. Check to be sure that what's on paper is being built. Or modified if there's a field change because something's not working, they'll recommend that you make those adjustments. So it's inspected as it goes in. There's a final inspection when the whole job is done. There's a punch list that's given by their office, all the things that have to be rectified, that should occur, you know, puddle here, you know, that kind of thing. They go out during storms to make sure that things are working.
Right.
We get a punch list, we have to fix that punch list. All this time, they hold our escrow money, which is the amount of money that it costs to build this job. Is actually held, one hundred and ten percent of it is held by the township to guarantee that we do the work we're supposed to do. That money's gonna be says we do what we're supposed to do and it's approved. At the end of the job, when it's all done and that punch list is done and we do all the work and then C K S signs off, they're done. We then go into what's called a maintenance period. Eighteen months from the date that it's finally inspected, and this is well after people have moved in. Because there's always little stuff that needs to get done, landscaping has to wait for weather, find paving for weather.
Right.
So at the end of all that, the eighteen month period starts. So we have to guarantee that it stays working for eighteen months, even though the job is done. And we have to put up an escrow for that. And then at the end of the eighteen months, C K S goes out again, does another inspection. So there is like time for everything to settle, all the storms to happen. And they go out and check it, so that's built in by Pennsylvania state statutes, not even a township code, that's law of state. So that's built in for your protection, to make sure that what's designed actually works, and then works for another eighteen months after you're old.
That's not like fifteen years from now, ten years from now.
It's not, it's eighteen months at the very end.
That concerns me because I was. Trying to live my, the rest of my life, my location, but. Um. I just think, I mean.
Any other comments?
Yes. Um, Lori, yeah, Tita, with seventy Westford Circle. Um, comments about we brought the super procedure. In the December meeting, we had a report from Mrs. Claire and, uh, from Montgomery County, I think, planning district. Um, my question is now, if it's a total redesign. Uh, does accounting give another recommendation based on this proposed sketch? Since it's significantly different?
Yes, the county may wish we'll write another letter. This wasn't, the one they submitted to the county, they're not. They're not making any substantial changes, they're not. This is state. Your state, you won't be able. And same opportunity for.
Okay, um. Couple of questions, I think one of the things you recommended was to reduce impervious space. Um, to narrow the driveways. And prevent, you know, more landscaping. Is that something, I mean, so those recommendations, they carry on even though we changed the near the roots?
Um, yeah, that recommendation, um, I went to look back at the previous letters was. I believe it was probably taken from one of, we have a model guidebook for town hostess line, so there is. There's a section that talks about driveway width and one of the recommendations, that would be to. Single hardwood driveways, the two. That would have to work with their design, but to do that, then you would have a little bit of space. It looks like there is space now, but that is one comment that.
I understand the stormwater advantage is different than previously. If, um, the the stormwater, you presented. And even though that landscaping would be replaced, and we're taking out a lot of trees, we're putting a lot more impervious surface. Do you recall what you said about how it takes a long time? The actually for basics, say, often there's significant amount. Disturbance, and I'm putting you on the spot, but that's something that hit my heart. And I was really concerned hearing that. There's a summary, um, that, recollection and recall.
I have that letter up here, I I remember what.
If if I could just make a comment at this point, this is a sketch plan at this point, which is why there are no reviews from our engineer. From the county or the traffic. Uh, Claire's office will review this again, but it's not really. Fair, in my opinion, to ask her to comment on something that does not have the same level of detail. As a full application would have. So for instance. They would have no idea how much clarity is going. We need a full set of that, of plans to be able to exceed that and understand it. So when that application is perceived. All of our consultants will fully review the plans. But right now, until that time, this is pure speculation. And I I just don't think, in my opinion, that it's fair to declare it under these circumstances.
To say sketch plan.
Right, it's not a fully engineered plan.
And you have heard a report. That puts you on the spot, and it's just kind of.
Our letter is very general, especially at this stage.
Okay, one, one more, we do have to wrap it up because we have some other business.
I'm near, it's not visiting, but to be. So many residents of the surrounding area that have been there over fifty years, this is our loan. So this is why the comments are coming forward. And I appreciate you taking.
No, I I do, and actually, you're. Uh, it's important to these folks to listen to your comments because the engineering costs several hundred thousand dollars and they don't want to. Uh, either make mistakes or do something that would just be. Blatantly have a negative impact to the surrounding area, so it's it's good to have. Discussion.
We want, we, this is planning, so the more, the more information that we have from you folks, it actually helps so that we don't have to redesign. We want to look at the fence, you know, we want to look at the things that you're talking about as we put the plans together. Sketch plan reviews are not required, this is totally voluntary. We could just do full engineering and submit preliminary final plans, but we didn't do that, we filed three sketch plans. So that we could meet with you and hear from you, so although. It's heartbreaking to some to see this land change, I understand that, I can't change that other than I can make modifications. So thank you for your. Yes, off to him. Great, thank you, everyone, nice to see you.
One moment, where everybody clears the roof, since you're all hitting the entrance. The last item that I had here is that we always combine our July and August meetings. So that date was voted on in January, the next planning commission meeting will be August fourteenth. Okay? And that will be on the website, but just so you don't show up on those. Fourth Wednesday. Okay, county plan review, Claire, take away.
Obviously, at this point, the topic of. As the very top. Last update of my initial P W. April twenty second. This is the version that. Shell has reviewed and provided. You were speaking just before the meeting this evening. About some of the changes that will need to be made. I will say that, I think there are a lot of changes, but there are a few details that will need to be left out. Were, were you able, should I go through the comments and try to adjust the stuff I get now?
I'd rather go through everything. If possible. So, so it's still a work in progress, but we're getting close to the end. Okay. Okay, um, and I think that's it, I already made my list. As far as he combined, uh. July and August meeting. Everybody have a. Good summary, we have a motion to adjourn. I'll make that one second, right, those in favor, I, I. Okay.